Okay, we have a quorum and I will begin this meeting. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll? If Ellis isn't here, I'll do it. Council members Brown.
Here.
Colbrook.
Here.
Percy. Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Sacks.
Here.
Woo.
Here.
And Mayor Marlin is here. Next up is approval of minutes of the proceedings of regular and special meetings. This would be the meeting for February 8th, 2021. Could we have a motion?
A motion to approve those minutes.
Moved by Jared.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill Colbrook. Any corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Council member Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
Percy. Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sacks.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda, public input and presentations. We have a presentation by Bill Brown as Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. A report out from the B-PAC.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it on the agenda. I didn't know if we'd have to add it, but I can go ahead and do it. I'll need to share my screen.
Actually, actually, to make this official, let's go ahead and add that to the agenda. If I could get a motion from a council member to, to go to item E, which is additions to the agenda and add presentation and then a proclamation to this evening's agenda. Presentation from B-PAC and then the proclamation on National Supermarket Employee Day.
I'll go ahead and make that motion that we add the presentation from B-PAC and the proclamation under item E. Is that what you said?
Yes, please. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll? Council members Brown.
Yes.
Colbrook.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts, yes.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, actually it was last month, in the January B-PAC meeting, we took another look at the 2018 Kicku Railroad Trail Connectivity Study. That's not the one we just approved as city council. In the fall or early winter, we approved the one that went from the existing trailhead clear through, clear up to downtown and to Lincoln Avenue. This is the one that was done before that. The main objective was to connect Weaver Park to the existing trailhead. Okay, so the study area was just from the trailhead. This is kind of a stylized drawing where it goes over to Walmart there. Or that's Walmart, but the existing trailhead ends at where Main Street comes out to, to 150 there. So the study area is pretty much this part here, the grayed in or the beige color. And this was in conjunction with the Park District and Forest Preserve District because Forest Preserve owns some of this property. And the Park District was the main focus, wanting to use Weaver Park as a trailhead was one of their main goals. So the three, three goals of the study were to connect KRT to Weaver Park, develop a primary trailhead at Weaver Park because the Park District has quite a bit of, quite a few plans for expanding Weaver Park and putting in restrooms and everything there. And that's going to make a nice trailhead and improve East Urbana access. As part of their study, the study that ended up was about 125 pages, so I won't go through all that. But there were, it was a pretty detailed process where I had a couple of public meetings. And this was public workshop number one, where people indicated their desired connections. They also went through the existing conditions and the speed limits, crash rates and all that sort of thing to come up with various alternatives. And then in the second public meeting, they presented those alternatives for people to vote on. This is just another example of one of the analysis they did of the pedestrian crashes that had been in that five-year period between 2011 and 2015. At the time, there hadn't really been anything serious on Main Street. This was a non-injury crash here with pedestrian. There were a couple of entry crashes, but they were both either, there was one on Washington and one on Puffer during that five-year period. And then one of the, the main thing that brought this up at B-PAC was the recent crash at Dewey and Main Street. There was pedestrian fatality there. So these were the nine alternatives that RPC developed from the public input. And then from each of these alternatives, they list them there. They went through and, and did constraints and opportunities for each one. The one that we, we focused on, after looking at the constraints and opportunities that were done, there were a couple. I don't have a slide for this, but there are bus stops all along Main Street here, mostly because these streets that connect to Main Street are the heavy bus route users and there's no sidewalk on Main Street there. So if the, if the bus wants to drop somebody off, they really have to drop them off at the end of the street so they can walk down. Otherwise, they're gonna be walking along Main Street with no sidewalk. So there's about four bus stops in that short quarter mile area there, which is pretty unusual for, for any street really in Urbana to have four designated stops that close together still. You remember a few years ago, they went from every, from as, as needed stops to designated stops. So all of these are designated stops through there. So that's one of the things that wasn't really considered very much in the original study was how well the pedestrian access to transit was enhanced by the various, by the various alternatives. So even though this one that we recommend now is alternative to the one that connects to Weaver Park here and would be a side path all along Main Street on the south side up to the existing trailhead. That one always ranked in the top three or four and they didn't rank, they didn't recommend, we didn't recommend a single option. We recommended, I mean, we listed the options, we ranked them and we were, the, the way we left it basically was any of the top three or four that would work and we'd kind of go by how much funding we can get, what funding opportunities we have. So the change that B-PAC is recommending is to make route, make option to, alternative to the most desired option and really go for funding for that. This is a conceptual drawing of alternative to looking west there and this is looking east. The existing, there's existing ditch here. There's right of way already purchased, but not enough. You'd have to buy a little bit of right of way. There's multiple ownership, there's county ownership or township ownership, I guess. And there's also opportunities to put in lighting along here too, which there isn't much lighting existing on East Main Street there. So this is just tables of the, of the way they were ranked at the end. So the opportunity to, whoops, I messed it up. Okay, let me try again. Actually, that might, might, might have been the last slide. Yeah, that was the last slide. There's a, basically it just ranked, they ranked the alternatives by the goals, the three original goals of the study and only those top, well, four, all the top five ranked. Yes, in each of the goals because the side path is much better for pedestrians than bike lanes would be along there. And then the constraints and opportunities, it basically just added up the number of constraints and opportunities. And the Main Street side path ranked in the top four with that too. And this wouldn't preclude what we've already done with Baker's Lane. We haven't actually done anything, but we did apply for a grant. You might remember in December, I think we applied for a ITech grant that would construct the multi-use path from Washington Street up to Main Street along Baker's Lane. That's the east side of Weaver Park there. We still want that to go in because between that and also the side path along Main Street would serve that whole Scottswood area a lot better. And that's an equity issue that's a little bit lower income area and definitely more African-American. And even though a lot of it is outside of the city limits, some of it is in city limits and potentially could be eventually. Equity was one of our goals in our, in all of our plans really. So that's another reason we recommended that. So where we are with it is we want, we wanted to make this recommendation to city council. If you'd like, we could bring a resolution that you could vote on to make it official. If we do that, we should also run it by the Forest Preserve District and the Park District because they help pay for this plan and they should have input on that too. So are there any questions about any of that?
Alice.
So you had mentioned there's, there's different, different, not organizations, different groups that own that, those different pieces. Do you have any estimate in terms of the proportion ownership for the different entities?
Um, I, I remember kind of looking at that. No, we didn't break it down by percentages or anything. A lot more of it was in Urbana than I was, than I thought originally. The crash actually was in Urbana, that Urbana owns a portion of the right of way there along Main Street for quite a ways, even though there's, if you just go, you know, step off the right of way, you're not in Urbana anymore. So I, I would hazard, I don't know, I'd hazard a guess maybe two thirds. It's a, the total is a half mile segment from Weaver Park to the trailhead. We probably already own about two thirds of the road, so we have to work out a little bit of agreement for the rest of it and definitely would need a little bit more right of way to the south side. There's, there's not quite enough, probably the main cost there is probably going to be the drainage issues, putting in a tile and putting the, the side path on top of that. But because it, because it is right next to a road, it's considered more transportation than recreation. And that can open up additional funding opportunities through the state. The ITech grants usually require 20% match.
And then how long does it usually take to, for ITech grants to be awarded?
This year, we applied in December and they're talking about, I think, April announcements, March or April. And I think it got, I, I may be wrong, but I think it got messed up a little bit from the pandemic. Usually it's every year and seemed like there, we might have had to skip a year or something because I don't know. It seemed like they got a little bit off schedule, but there's also more funding available now. More went into that portion. There was a state law that passed that added additional funding to that. So there's going to be more available over the next year or two.
So if we were awarded grant funds, what do you think is the, how long? And maybe this is a question for city staff. How long does it take to actually get built? Are we talking two years? Are we talking one year? Are we talking five years? I'm just looking for rough numbers.
Yeah, just from experience, I wouldn't, I wouldn't count any time real soon. It just kind of depends on the priority city council wants to make it, I guess. But if we're, if we're gonna wait for ITech grants, it's an annual opportunity and it's, in, in the last four or five years, I think we get, we've gotten about half the ones we applied for.
Okay, all right, thank you. Carol.
I was just gonna weigh in a little bit on timing. You know, it's, it hasn't been our practice to condemn property. It's, you know, if we can negotiate or opportunistically buy property. So I think it would be the land acquisition that would really take the longest.
Sharice.
Um, I just wanted to know, because Bill was saying, was talking about some of the property was in Urbana and some of it is not. Is that, does that mean that that's county property? And since it's unincorporated, it's unincorporated Urbana, basically. So would the county therefore be able to also chip in and give funds to extend it out into that area?
Um, I think those are township roads. So the county does own like highways that are outside of Urbana. But I, I think those would be township roads, but I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the arrangement is as far as, you know, since I think the township does pick up ownership of part of Main Street, but there may be some cooperative agreement where Urbana plows it and takes care of it. And so I'm not sure how that would impact it. So yeah, I think that's more of a question for staff, but yeah, we could ask. But yeah, I think usually with the ITech grants, you can apply as, with more than one agency. Like we could go in with the Forest Preserve District and apply for funds if they wanted to. I think in the past, the Park District in Urbana has, has gone together on some and applied together. But yeah, I think it's possible.
Okay, Dennis.
So to, to secure the additional right of way that would be needed from different property owners, I assume that the city would, what, negotiate with each individual property owner to achieve some kind of an agreement about the value of the property? Is that how it goes?
I think that's how it works. I think in this case, I mean, Carol could weigh in, but it wouldn't be whole properties. It would be more like, probably similar to what we did along Green Street, which did take a while, where you have to acquire, you know, maybe three feet or two or three feet of somebody's front yard or side yard or something.
And so then if a person is not willing to negotiate, you have to wait until some situation occurs before you can continue that with the process?
I'll let Carol answer that.
That's been our practice. I, I, I think it, you know, it's possible that you can, I don't know how it works in Illinois, but it seems like the kind of thing that one could use eminent domain for. I don't know where you get the authority from, if that comes from the council or elsewhere. But that certainly hasn't been the practice here to use eminent domain.
Yeah, I understand that. And for acquiring alongside of a road, a three-foot margin, what is the typical like, what square foot or square yard cost of property? Does it depend upon the value that the individual places upon it? Or is there a, is there a go-to, a price which the city offers and then negotiation begins?
There's a, there's a methodology in appraisal where you appraise the property you know, as it is, and then you appraise minus whatever it is that you want to obtain. And so you could imagine that in some cases, it might just be a part of someone's front yard. In another case, and it could be grass. In another case, there might be a lot of landscaping. In another place, it might impact some drainage that they have. It could impact their, their driveway access. So it's very, it's very individualized as it relates to each property. And then it's a function of the value of the land in that immediate area, which I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
Right. Yeah, and is it possible to ask that for the benefit of the community, that the right of way be donated? I mean, is there an option? Is there a way of people donating this property to the city? Or does the city kind of obligated to purchase it?
Oh, I guess we're not obligated to purchase it, but I think most people when they're, you know, that's certainly an option. But I, I don't know that we've encountered a lot of people wanting to donate property to the city.
You never know where there's a big-hearted person, but you know, okay, I'll take that for face value. Thank you.
We can always hope for that.
I, I could say too, that in a lot of studies, the recreational trails do add value to properties. I think in this case, having a, a multi-use path there where people could use to get to their bus stops could be seen as a positive. I don't know if there'd be a lot of reluctance, especially since there's already a ditch there. There'd have to be quite a bit of drainage work done anyway to make that still work. But I don't see how it could really negatively impact things too much, but it would be taking space.
Bill, do you think that the project that you're hoping to achieve is sort of too complex to materialize? I mean, is it, it's pretty, it's difficult, it sounds like, to acquire, you know, maybe the right of way is going to be a difficult thing to acquire. Would that harm the, the project generally if it couldn't work out?
Well, the other alternatives, all the alternatives are a little complex to even the, the one along the railroad track. It would be a, it would be a rail trail there because there's no active line up to Smith Road, but the city doesn't own it all, the Forest Preserve doesn't own it all. We'd still have to buy some of that from the railroad company. So that's a little complex too. And that would just be, it wouldn't be useful to the people in that neighborhood so much. It would be useful still and it's still something we would want to do eventually for a recreational trail. It's useful for people coming from St. Joe to go downtown to just stay on that route. So they wouldn't have to get off and go along Main Street and then cross Main Street to get back on. So any alternative is gonna be a little complex, but you know, it's a, it's just, it's part of the deal. I think anytime you, you add something to an existing infrastructure, it's gonna be a little complicated.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Again.
And this will come to council eventually with more, with more detail.
Yeah, we can bring a resolution if council, that's, that's what people like. Just let me know if you have any more questions or you have any input.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to public input. First person is Audrey Ishi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Okay.
Audrey Ishi. As you know, Chris Hansen and the Edgar County watchdogs have an expensive lawsuit against our city. Last meeting, Edgar County explained how good they are at lawsuits and getting people fired. They had been given a conversation from our closed neighborhood listserv, so I got curious and took a look at Chris Hansen's website. First thing I see is a link to a video clip ridiculing council member Sharice Hershey by suggesting that she let out a storm of profanities. Then I found that Hanson publicly posted the mortgage indeed of a city employee just to prove that he could do it. Finally, I saw that he doesn't even respect his own privacy. He listed the FOIA number of his requests for all of his own police complaints. So I requested his same FOIA from the city. Please write these numbers down because you can request it too and you really need to. 2019 F-387 and 2020 F-386. It turns out that Hanson filed 81 police complaints last year. The other 42,000 of us Urbannans filed 13 in a very difficult year. Many of his were multiple complaints requiring long reports to respond. Obviously, a lot of work and expense that we taxpayers are paying for. So I read a few, May 2019. He called 911 because two black boys walked from the alley to the street through his yard. He told 911 that it was an attempted bike theft and he was chasing them. He continued to chase, but eventually the police found him, found the boys and refused to arrest them. They looked at Hanson's recording. The boys did not even slow as they passed his bikes. The black boy said that he has followed their friends in the past and he is known to accuse blackmails of theft. He then claimed criminal trespass justified his chase. Officers asked him how he would feel if the roles were reversed and he were the one being pursued. He replied that he was doing his civic duty. This single police complaint has been the subject of thousands of dollars of FOIAs and appeals by Hanson, paid by the city taxpayers. So I opened another one. Again, he called 911, this time in October 2019 about an attempted bike theft by a blackmail. The police came. They asked him if a bike was locked. He said it was. The police tilted it a bit and said it is not. Hanson filed an official complaint that the police tampered with his bike. Another item was that the officers he had previously complained about came to his call and this made him uncomfortable. He has made 81 complaints in one year and the police are supposed to make sure that no one named ever answers his calls. Can we let that sink in for a moment? But it gets worse. Hanson had 28 FOIAs between January, July in 2020. The FOIAs cost even more than the police complaints because of legal work. This is real money, not just a rearrangement of tasks. Hires are being made to cope. Did you know that you can request a log of the FOIAs by Hanson, his associates and his pseudonyms? Please order the FOIAs he's already filed, save the city some work. Naturally, they won't be on his website, so get them from the city. It's all free and that's why he's weaponized it because it costs him nothing until he became subject to the remedy of recovering a small part of the actual expense from abusive requesters. He says he's a watchdog for the community, but please do order the logs of his FOIAs and appeals and judge for yourself. Please imagine what Urbana could do with the tens to hundreds of thousands that we, the taxpayers, have spent to address the incredible sense of entitlement and privilege of this one man. I demand that Urbana shut this man down. You say you want to fix structural racism? Then let's stop indulging the person who is making 911 calls to complain about the very existence of black boys. He has weaponized police complaints and FOIAs long before Aleah and he's used her as a human shield for his white rage. We could be uplifting the Aleahs in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hanson.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, I had, but I guess I'll try to respond to a few of those things. I did not call 911 for those situations. I understand the police department is making some efforts to smear me because it's in their interest. If anyone is concerned about what I'm doing to try to affect change with the city, you're very welcome to contact me and we can talk about it. And I can explain to you why I'm doing some of the things I'm doing. I've never used any pseudonyms or fake names to request FOIA documents. That's just not true. I don't know why someone's saying that about me. There's no, I don't know where all these numbers of accounting are coming from, but there doesn't appear to be any evidence of that. I'm not targeting black people. That's ridiculous. So I, I, I understand there's an election going on and a lot of people are trying to smear each other. But like I said, if you're concerned about what I'm doing here, you can contact me anytime you want. It's, it's kind of weird that all of a sudden there's all these conspiracy theories from people who claim to be concerned about the city, but none of them or none of you have ever tried to talk to me. So let's just talk about it. All right, on to the agenda tonight. I was disappointed that the, the B-PAC presentation wasn't put on the official agenda. I think people would have liked to hear about that so they could watch the meeting tonight. But I mostly want to talk about the ordinance amending city code chapter 12. So your plan is to take out divisions three and four. And I wondered if you, I was thinking about section 12-83 on confidentiality. Did you plan to take that out as well? Because I think you're Because I think you're, well, I think first of all, people are going to seriously hesitate to submit a complaint against the city for a discrimination complaint if there's no confidentiality involvement. As we can see, those types of things are weaponized against people, just like it is tonight, close tonight. And then I wanted to kind of roll back and take a look at why we're at where we're at. So there was this hearing on November 10th. And I think the city administration seems to want to kind of deny the history of events here. So first, the Chair of the Human Relations Commission said that what the city was doing was a violation of the HR ordinance. And then the hearing body on November 10th thought the city was violating the ordinance too. And then the city administrator Carol Mitten sent a letter to the HRC telling them that the city didn't have to follow the ordinance and that the city was going to keep discriminating despite the ordinance. And then last week, the co-chair of the HRC, Pete Resnick, also said that what the city has been doing was a violation of the ordinance. And then what we got was just the mayor saying very loudly that the city has been following the ordinance. And I think this has been, last week's meeting was a good litmus test for exactly how things are going to work when you take out the accountability portion of the ordinance. It's going to go through the city administration, and they're just going to always deny that there was ever a problem. So, and then what was interesting is last week's discussion is Charisse Hersey and Bill Colbrook seem to want to start to dismantle the ordinance, at least the criminal background check portion of it. So I don't really get it. I mean, if you guys, if you guys are okay with people discriminating based on criminal background checks, then you should change that part of the ordinance. I don't think we should do that. I think it's wrong for an arm of the state to extend the punishment of the judiciary. And that's what you do when you discriminate against someone for their criminal history. So I think you're taking out the accountability part of the ordinance, and I think it's pretty clear that this is going to basically mean that the human rights ordinance, the city just won't follow it. They won't have to because there's no, there's no accountability into it. So I encourage you not to do that. And I think if you keep going down this path, it's just going to cause more and more problems and more and more disenfranchisement by the residents of Urbana. Thank you.
Next up is Pete Resnick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Pete Resnick. I'm speaking to you during public input tonight because I want to make clear that even though I am Vice Chair of the Commission, the things that I'm about to say have not been approved in any way by the Commission. I'm giving you my opinion of what I think the Commission might say, but I'm speaking for myself. So by the way, contrary to Mr. Hanson's claim, I made no claim last week that the city has violated the ordinance. That said, I took a look at Carol Mitten's proposed ordinance change that you guys have up for Chapter 12 tonight. And in general, I think it's a really good approach to dealing with this. And I thank Bill Brown for noticing the possible conflict and the elegance of saying that if you're going to go in this direction, just excluding Division 3 is, 3 and 4 is sufficient. And now it was reduced, so it's 3 and sections 101, 102, and 103, I believe, of Division 4. So two things. First, with regard to Division 4, each of the sections that you are excluding yourself from are only about things that the Commission fines you in violation of. Since you would exclude Division 3, which is the complaint investigation hearing process, the Commission couldn't so fine with regard to the city. So I think there's nothing to be gained by removing those sections from Division 4. I think you can simply exclude Division 3, and you'll be fine with that issue. Removing Division 3 gets rid of all of the complaint procedure, investigation, mediation, and hearing, and I think that's sufficient. If you're going to do that, however, I would suggest that instead of the simple change that has been proposed in the definition of person up in section 12-39, you add to that definition the government of the city of Urbana. Because all of the other sections that are going to still be in play for the city of Urbana should probably mean that you are an employer according to the, to the rest of the ordinance. Since you won't be subject to the hearing, it won't be a problem for you to be subject to the rest of the ordinance, which would be, I think, what I heard last week, the sense of the council was tilting toward. I also think that you should explicitly take the language that was proposed by the Commission for the change to the definition of public accommodation, both in 1239 and in 12-64, I'm sorry, 12-65. No, I missed it. 12-63. I think you should take those definitions so that clearly the city is also a public accommodation that provides government services. And again, you'll be subject to all of the other provisions of the ordinance, but won't be subject to the enforcement action. I think this has the additional, so it makes everything consistent. And introducing new inconsistencies wouldn't be a great idea. The other thing that this does, as was indicated last week, if you do eventually decide that you would prefer the city to be subject to some enforcement procedure, you won't have to go back and change these definitions again, because the city will already be in the definition. So that's all I had, and I will try and stick around for the next section, just in case there are other questions.
I was just going to ask you to stick around if you could. Thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Hear me?
Yes.
Can you put up the clock, please?
Alan, can you turn up your volume, please?
Turn up my volume?
Yeah, you're very faint.
Ah, I'm not sure what's going on, but I'm closer to the microphone. Can you hear me better now?
That's better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I've done quite a lot of research socioeconomically for trying to affect change and to protect our most vulnerable residents. So I want to point out the bias in Audrey's research. First off, Audrey, welcome to the community. Thank you for participating, and thank you for your research, which is mostly sourced from Esther Pat. Now, let's go to a November 2020 listening session where Christopher Hanson had proclaimed that he had lost trust in the police and would no longer be using them as a resource for addressing ills in the community. This is quite clearly public record information. And these are incomplete research rushed through a biased process with confidence inducing misinformation or willful. I'm going to take the benign interpretation of that. That said, I want to focus on the resolution to, oh wait, nope, I've got another one there. Audrey mentioned Aleah Lewis. Four months, almost a year now, people have been fundraising for Aleah Lewis to have her needs met. If you want to accuse anyone of using a human shield, your name better be on the list of the people who donated to help Aleah Lewis, while the police are still ruining her life, while the state's attorney is still ruining her life, and while people in this community who you deride and create conspiracy theories for actually advocate for her for months. Welcome to the community, Audrey. The link to the GoFundMe is gofundme.com/f/ale039yahlewis039-mutual-aid-fund. You can find it on my social media. You can find it on the COVID mutual aid group because I'm going to be posting it there. Welcome to the community, Audrey. Now, as far as the resolution that's going to be pointed out tonight, let's again revisit the resolution as it relates to Aleah Lewis, as it's supposed to address that. The resolution right now does not explicitly say that when a gun is present, that de-escalation shall be attempted. Let's remember that the police chief Seraphin specifically said that because a gun was present, he did not believe that de-escalation was necessary. Let's remember that there were recommendations for improving policy to narrow these gaps. And let's also remember that we are, in theory, proposing this resolution to specifically address what happened last April. So to the city council, I urge that you amend this to specifically mention a gun being present and to say that de-escalation shall be attempted even when a gun is being present. Otherwise, this is symbolic. Otherwise, I worry about how cynical this is in proximity to the primary that ends tomorrow. Otherwise, this doesn't address the very issues that brought most of these people who you condescend to into this space. If you want them to go, address the issues that they're here for. That's why they're here. As for anything else, no, I don't think I have anything else. So again, welcome to the community. Have a good night.
Next up is Colin Dodson.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Give me just a moment. So I had some comments on both the use of force policy and the HRO amendment. With respect to the use of force policy, first, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Wu for taking your time to write this. I do think that in the future, authorization for use of force should be more explicitly defined based on a whitelist basis rather than a blacklist, which is to say that conditions under which escalation is warranted should be explicitly defined, such as an immediate threat to any individual or community's health and safety. Under section 2, describing the review board, I really do think that more than one civilian should be present on the force review board. And ideally, closer to half of the board would be more appropriate. And also with regard to the board, it really is imperative that those with criminal records should be explicitly authorized to serve on the board. Otherwise, the police have an incentive ultimately to put people through the legal system and essentially to cover themselves. And under section 3, there's a line here that the police department shall submit an annual report to the city council. That's great, but auditing mechanisms need to be in place that don't rely on self-generated reports. The idea being that, you know, this whole document emphasizes the importance of building trust as with the shared 10 points, the 10 points shared agreement. But it's necessary to verify in order to have trust. As well, data needs to be available more frequently than once a year. It doesn't have to be as rigorous as the annual reports, but victims of police brutality should have the right to speedy redress of their grievances. And the city and community members should be part of that process. Again, Councilmember Wu, thank you very much for drafting this resolution. It's a fantastic start, and it can be a solid scaffold for future accountability policies. With respect to the Human Rights Ordinance Amendment, I get the impression over the last few meetings of this council that this ordinance is not really getting the consideration it deserves. If memory serves correctly, it was approximately three weeks ago when this issue was formally raised before the council. Given in the mayor's words that this is an issue that has existed since the Human Rights Ordinance has existed, I don't think that an adequate solution to such a long-lasting problem is something that we're going to come to in the span of three weeks. And in my view, it's clear that the city administration has had an interest from the beginning in one specific outcome of the process. And ultimately, ordinances should be driven by our elected leaders, not unelected city staff. And if I'm not mistaken, administration claimed over the last few weeks that the goal isn't to exempt the city from the HRO, but that this ordinance, but this ordinance clearly states, whereas the city council desires to clarify that the city, its employees, its agents are not subject to the Human Rights Ordinance. This is clearly contradictory. Additionally, statements of intention like the city shall conform to the requirements, et cetera, are great, but without robust accountability and some mechanism for enforcement, these statements in practice do nothing. Admittedly, the changes to section 2 do attempt to address some of this issue, but not in an enforceable way. The Commission shall work with the mayor, city council, et cetera, in order to correct any discrimination. If there is no binding power relationship, there's nothing to stop city staff and the mayor from just brushing off allegations. This ordinance needs more work and detention, and it's my opinion, it should not be passed tonight. At the very least, the city should revise council.
Mr. Dodson, your time is up. Thank you. Next up is Evelyn B. Underwood.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Dr. Underwood.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say quickly, I don't know if I want to address that. I just hate to see people, you know, trying to, people have a right to do whatever they want to do. But I just hope we have more love for one another and kindness, although this is an election. The heart of the team is in the hands of God and everybody else's. So I don't think we, I hope that we try not to play God or try to downgrade people because of the election. Anyway, that's not why, I'm just so disappointed. However, as I say, this is America, and we have a right to say whatever we please, as long as we're not, you know, there's some restrictions to freedom of speech. But I hope we can, just let me say about the use of force. Let me get to that. I really appreciate the work that has been done by the NAACP, the ACLU, and the Ministerial Alliance. And I just hope we consider, not we, you, the city council and the mayor, consider the material that has been researched and brought forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great, great. I hope everyone is well and in good health during this election slash COVID season. Getting right to it on the topic of de-escalation. It is my firm belief, as someone who is a former military, you know, Army Reserve soldier, former TOO, that de-escalation has to be an imperative thing in this whole policing thing that we have going on. And it's not something that's really up to debate at this point now. We have a popular reference, a big reference. If we want to see if de-escalation actually matters in the community, we need not look any further than Newark, New Jersey, which after its round of reform and de-escalation training, did not fire a single shot, did not have a single fatality for 365 days, which makes a huge difference. That could have been anybody. I mean, that could have been a George Floyd, that could have been a Trayvon Martin, that could have been a lot of different people. And so I implore the police and, you know, those who are here in this, this council to take a good look at what it is that you claim to want for the community. If it's equity and justice, then de-escalation is the only route to go as far as police tactics are concerned. as far as police tactics are concerned, at least as a start. I mean, you still have to tackle, you know, implicit bias and everything like that. The other part of it would be accountability, as other people have already alluded to, the language within the use of force policy before it's revised version. And even still now includes a lot of language that is not, uh, it holds no accountability to the officer at all. As a matter of fact, it gives almost complete autonomy to the officer to take whatever action that they feel like taking and thus because they took it, it be justified. Even though in recent memory, we've seen this play out and we've seen the loss and the devastation and the injustice and all of the other things that it spurred on. So I would hope that we have learned from that history and we can move forward tonight. You have an opportunity to do that, to provide Urbana as a flagship per se for other cities in the state and in the region. To show them how to do this the right way. So I hope that everyone is committed to exactly that purpose. Otherwise, real quickly, seeing that I only have a few seconds left, there is one thing that I wanted to say really quickly. And that is that I really love the SWIFT program and what it stands for. And I believe that if these governments say that they really view equality, they'll put their money where their mouth is and match that million dollars. We got a billion dollars in weed revenue, we can split that up and make it happen. Much love, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Erin Abbott.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Erin Abbott and I wish to make two points tonight. First, I would like to recognize the council members and city staff, including the mayor, for their hard work. I know that your jobs are not glamorous and they are not lucrative. Every Monday night, the council meets and takes input. And in the past year, the tone of this input has turned nasty. It has been mean and vitriolic. And the council members have handled this vitriol with professionalism and grace. Think about that, every week they're blasted with lies and slander and they have to sit there with Zoom on mute and listen to this. This brings me to my second point. It is said that we should speak truth to power. I wish tonight to speak truth to trolls, to trolls who inhabit the public comment portion of these Monday night meetings. These trolls come in two categories. There are ignorant trolls and there are malevolent trolls. The ignorant trolls come demanding change and demanding action that they don't have the foggiest idea about any of this works. They don't know what the city council is responsible for, they don't know how the budget works. And it's embarrassing. These people do not speak for Urbana or the people of Urbana because people in Urbana are smart and informed and these people are ignorant. So stop wasting our time. Why don't you get on the Google and educate yourself before you join the Zoom meeting? The second type of troll is the malevolent troll. These are the trolls who waste city resources with endless FOIA requests. These are the trolls who berate city staff with bullying emails. Their trolling is born of an odd mix of narcissism blended with a messiah complex. Malevolent trolls are cancer on Urbana and on these council meetings. We all know who they are. One of them is running for council and already spoke tonight. Thankfully, someone called him out. They operate by fear and intimidation. My message tonight is speak truth to trolls. Call them out, call them out like the first commenter of tonight did. Do not let them control the public discourse, do not let them bully you on Facebook, do not let them win with a barrage of bloviating websites. And for the love of God, do not vote for them. Call them out, confront them, expose their lies and their hypocrisy, and they will back down because in truth they're cowards.
Thank you. Next up is Ben.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I am not used, just would like to let you all know that I am not using my last name because I do not wish to be harassed or defamed by certain individuals that have been spoken of and have already spoken at today's meeting. The first thing I would like to mention is that I am quite disgusted with some of the ways that, well, some of the comments that certain individuals have been making for months and months and months. It is very dangerous because it is very untrue. Most of what is being said is a waste of the city's time, is a waste of the city council meeting time. There is actual business to be done in the city and it needs to get done. Also, I would note that by allowing these individuals to repeatedly come to the meeting, spread misinformation, lies, conspiracy theories, it makes it intimidating for others who have different ideas to come because they could be harassed, defamed by these individuals. This, it is really a shame that this is going on. It needs to stop. And I do believe that if any of these individuals get anywhere near to the council, it will cause so many problems. I cannot imagine any type of business owner, any sort of new developer, anyone like that wanting to come here if you have, if they have to deal with those people on the council harassing, bullying, intimidating them. I would suggest that this council takes action to change the rules of the meeting to make, to prevent these people from coming every single meeting and speaking because it's a waste of time and it's just damaging to the whole city as, to the city as a whole. And already on this evening, we heard from two and one, the first commenter was, has a different view than some of these people and went on to be harassed by two additional. That's not acceptable. It needs to stop. And if the, I'm afraid that if the council doesn't take the action now to stop it, it is just going to get worse and it really must change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wayne Williams.
Hi, everybody. I am here to talk about ordinance 2021 dash two dash four. And I would like to start by saying, I apologize for not being as an informed a public citizen as I usually am, because I see that this ordinance is on the consent agenda. This ordinance, what it's doing is asking for one parcel to be annexed into the city of Urbana and Cunningham Township. And while this will probably pass, I would hope that in the future, city councils take pause when these types of requests are coming. There are going to be some unintended consequences of this annex. One being that parcel number 30 dash 21 dash 04 dash 301 dash 008 will be completely surrounded by the city of Urbana without actually being in the city of Urbana. Now, people choose to live in unincorporated Urbana for many reasons, but usually just because of the lower taxes. No one wants to pay. Can you hear me?
No, we lost about 10 seconds of you.
Okay.
No one wants to pay.
Urbana taxes until they need Urbana services. I imagine that this particular property owner is asking to be annexed in because of a recent explosion of a house in unincorporated Urbana just down the street from them that resulted in a fire. Now, I actually live not far from this property. And I remember being astonished to see that not only was it the Eastern Period Fire Department that responded to the fire, but they were quickly overwhelmed and needed help. And the Savoy Fire Department came and helped put out the fire. The people living on Willow Road, unincorporated Urbana probably didn't realize that they may have to wait for a fire truck all the way from Savoy to come help them when they are in need. So I would just like to remind the council that it's very convenient now that, that this one property wants to come into the city limits. It's because I'm sure they want the city services and we're going to let them in. It looks like basically for free, even though they have never paid city taxes. And, you know, if that's what you guys want to do, so be it. But one thing that I have seen while at the township is how less fortunate people, people with less power tend to get screwed over by the lines that we don't see, that only people like us see. But the line said that regular people don't see the lines between the city of Urbana versus unincorporated Urbana. And it can be very frustrating for citizens. And I would like to see the council do something more than this one by one approach, if possible. Lastly, I would like to say I really appreciated Erin's words at the council. And I'm going to do what he says and call out one of the trolls. Hello, troll and homeboy.
Wayne, you cut out again.
Trolli, homeboy, wherever you are, take care and God bless. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Tracy Chung.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chung from Urbana. First, I have a question. Why can't we see council members when we are giving public input? Can someone explain why you guys decided to do this change? It's a bit weird that we can't look at you how we speak. Secondly, since the de-escalation resolution is on the agenda tonight, I'm going to bring up the TASER incident from 2019 where an unarmed black man was tased without warning as required by the TASER ordinance. And in which the footage that showed the complete incident was suppressed by Urbana Police Department. Maybe you guys think that this is a petty issue and that I'm just nitpicking to make the police look bad. But actually, it is more than that. You are now talking about how the use of force review board should look like moving forward. And it's in the resolution. And I think that this thing is, this issue is going to be discussed much more in the future. And the TASER incident that I've brought up many times is just one example where a use of force board, even if it's comprised of all civilians, will be useless if the information provided by the police for these civilians to review is not complete. So I would like us to think and discuss how we can fix this root problem. The second thing is that, the third thing is that finally, after 10 months since Anya Lewis was attacked by the Urbana Police Department, Urbana Police Officers, I was quite surprised to hear that Mayor Malin publicly state that the incident was shocking to see and she wished that it didn't happen. And I guess I'm just wondering if this is a recent revelation or if it was how you felt all along, but I just kept quiet and not acknowledged it all these months because it is damaging that in silence, you're basically giving your approval to the misconduct of Urbana Police Officers. So lastly, I'm glad that the election is tomorrow and we can finally go back to focusing on the issues. All of us who have been speaking week after week, trying to work on these issues, trying to improve the city and advocating for months without just people randomly popping out who have their own political agenda, trying to work up the public by suggesting conspiracy theories, spreading lies and using smear tactics. I just want us to go back to focusing on the real issues. Thank you.
Next speaker is Justin Michael Hendricks.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks. I am the creator of Hit and Home Boy, CU residence, Parkland College student. And make sure you all donate to the food pantries across Champaign, Urbana from Hit and Home Boy in the community closets as well. As we don't troll, we do the work and we turn up. So make sure you turn up with us as we don't have time to troll when we're doing the work in the streets. Make sure you also tune in this week Tuesday as we have the final series of My Black Mental Health Matters, as tomorrow we discuss mental health for adults over 40 and black women. And then we have a special segment on Thursday with sisterhood, family and more. So make sure you tune in and turn up with us on Hit and Home Boy on Facebook. That's H I T N, H O M E, B O Y. With that being said, I am Justin Michael Hendricks. You know where to find me, you know what to do. Education, advocacy, hip hop culture, I am Hit and Home Boy. Make sure you use their phone number and hit me up. Have a good day.
Okay, we have a phone number ending in 435. Did you wish to speak?
And on the phone, they'll need to press star six on mute. Looks like they just did.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, please. Can anyone hear us? Okay, we'll come back to 435. Can you hear me? Yes. Can you hear me? Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elders, we're in the car here, good evening, Mayor Malin and council. I submitted a document earlier today. And part of the document was for use of force updates. And then I sent it some recommendations for the resolution that's going to be presented tonight, the resolution 2021 02 007 R, the resolution prioritizing tactical de-escalation and the use of force policy and police transparency in Urbana. First of all, I sent it on behalf of the Minister Alliance of Champaign-Urbana Vicinity. And we support strongly the proposed changes that were submitted by the NAACP and ACLU. I won't have time to read through this whole letter, but, so the resolution and section two, these things were already stated before by another speaker, but the, make the board, it says the board is, use of force review board is to increase transparency and impartiality. We suggest that you use two, at least two or more people to serve on that board because the current board is composed of internal affairs departmental leadership. And those people who are selected should be community advocates. And I have some prior experience in serving in Champaign on the SRO, the Rising Committee at the time, and I was president. And there were people who were on the board from the community who were fearful. And I'm saying that because one person, if they're not courageous and being in the presence of law enforcement leadership, because at the time they had, you know, they wore their guns. And being honest, I was intimidated a little bit. But we have a job to do. And one thing was if the Reverend Dr. Marla DeKeen were to come from the dead, he would, he would be able to serve as one person on a board such as that because of his courageous character. But an average person would not be able to do that unless they had that. Because it is something that we have to be honest about as a people and as a community. honest about as, as a people and as a community and of the people that may have a fear. And, um, so that's, I wanted to explain why I said two or more, um, on that board. And the section three was related to the reporting. I spoke about, um, the limited oversight authority of the mayor and the city council. And because of past delays of reporting data of citi- citizen interaction, there should be more frequent review of reports, uh, for the use of force data. And we propose changing to quarterly or at least annually. And I understand that the state, um, the governor has signed the law, um, today. So it'll be even more frequently. So I know there'll be changes coming up for that and it'll be available publicly as well.
Elders Carr, your time is up.
Yeah.
So thank you very much. And your comments, uh, that you sent in today will be entered into the meeting record. Thank you. Sarah Nixon.
My name is Sarah Nixon and I'm a longtime resident of Urbana-Champaign. City Council concerning tonight's agenda item relating to the ordinance amending City Code Chapter Twelve, the Exceptions to the Human Rights Ordinance. We will vote this evening on a resolution to change the ordinance so that public officials are, are held less accountable. The ci- the council should oppose the proposed ordinance changes. They propose to remove section twelve dash eighty-three-E from any complaint against the city. This is the section that provides for confidentiality for complainants. So moving forward, anyone filing a human rights complaint against the city apparently can readily be retaliated against and publicly attacked for filing a complaint. Does that not defeat the purpose of human, human rights ordinance? The amendment apparently provides that the city will now work through complaints investigation and hearing process with everyone but the complainant. So removing section three gets rid of all the complaints investigation and hearings procedure. And effectively, when you remove the civilian complainant from the complaint process, the city will be free to always just rule in favor of itself. I'd like to make a comment as well related to a, the, the resolution prioritizing tactical de-escalation in the use of force policy and police transparency in Urbana. The de-escalation resolution, as it appears, looks quite inadequate. It's a weak and vague, thin few pages. And missing from these pages is a clear set of standards and policies for transparency, accountability, and disciplinary consequences for officers who violate the use of force policy, including termination. So the city must review and revise the contract itself that unreasonably restricts police discipline and termination and that shields or erases police complaints and disciplinary records. Otherwise, you're protecting bad apples at the expense of the good cops who are doing their jobs and doing them well. And these are the cops who do not revictimize innocent people. And finally, I'd like to comment on last week, you voted on a resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. And I'm sure that you all had high hopes of going down in the local history books as having passed a momentous historical piece of legislation. But in reality, this administration will leave a very different legacy. You sign this document with one hand while the other is shielding racist police brutality. You voted "I" out of one side of your mouths while the other side persistently says nothing in the face of the assaults, traumatization, and terrorization of Aliyah Lewis by the Urbana Police Department. I want to celebrate with you the resolution committing to end structural racism and achieving racial equity, but I just can't. Here's how I read your resolution. Whereas the city of Urbana endeavors to lead the pursuit of racial equality and justice, end quote, but not for Aliyah Lewis, quote. And whereas equality does not come at the expense of another, but ensures that everyone gets what they need to be a full participant in their community, end quote, but not for Aliyah Lewis. And whereas white supremacy defy, defies what it means to be American by denying the ideals, so on, yada, 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 but does not apply to Aliyah Lewis. And whereas in order for-
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, um, we have one last presentation and that is a proclamation. Today is National Supermarket Employee Day. This was brought to our attention by a local supermarket and we decided that it was worth celebrating in the city of Urbana because of the extraordinary work that, um, people in the retail food, uh, sector have done since, especially since the beginning of the pandemic. So today, we, um, visited a couple of markets, one large, one small, and we delivered copies of the proclamation declaring today supermarket employee day in the city of Urbana to all food markets within the Urbana city limits. And I wanted to share, uh, a video. We also delivered these in, uh, English, French, and Spanish, depending upon which market we went to. So people could, could share in this as well. So we have a short video, um, and you can see how it went today. Rather than read it at the meeting tonight, I wanted to show you how we read it this afternoon. We have a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas there are nearly six million supermarket employees in the United States. And whereas in the Urbana area, there are two thousand forty-one food retail jobs that generate approximately three hundred fifty-one point four million dollars in economic activity. And whereas supermarket employees provide all Americans with access to safe, healthy, and affordable food.
Proclamación de la alcaldesa de la ciudad de Urbana, Illinois, considerando que hay casi seis millones de empleados de supermercados en los Estados Unidos y considerando que en el área de Urbana hay dos mil cuarenta y uno puesto de trabajo en el comercio de alimentos que generan aproximadamente trescientos cincuenta y uno punto cuatro millones en actividades económicas. Considerando que los empleados de los supermercados brindan a todos los estadounidenses acceso seguro, saludable, y comida a precio accesibles o baratos.
And whereas supermarket employees work to enhance the health and well-being of each customer. And whereas supermarket employees contribute and volunteer countless hours in their communities. And whereas supermarket employees face unprecedented challenges keeping grocery shelves stocked during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Y considerando que los empleados de los supermercados trabajan para mejorar la salud y el bienestar de cada cliente. Y considerando que los empleados de los supermercados contribuyen y aportan innumerable horas voluntarias en sus comunidades. Y considerando que los empleados de los supermercados enfrentan desafíos sin precedentes para mantener los estantes llenos durante la pandemia del COVID-diecinueve.
And whereas supermarket employees have and continue to meet and exceed these challenges while displaying courage, compassion, dedication, leadership, and patience, as well as exemplifying customer service and community outreach. And whereas the need for supermarket employees is greater than ever because of current and growing consumer demands as well as their reputation for excellence.
Y considerando que los empleados de los supermercados han continuado cumpliendo y superando estos desafíos al mismo tiempo que demuestran coraje, compasión, dedicación y liderazgo, además de amplificar el servicio a los clientes y alcance comunitario. Y considerando que la necesidad de empleados de supermercados es mayor que nunca debido a las demandas de los consumidores y así como a su reputación de excelencia.
Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one as Supermarket Employee Day in the city of Urbana, Illinois. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
La alcaldesa de la ciudad de Urbana, Illinois, por la presente proclama el veintidós de febrero, veinte veintiuno, como día del empleado de supermercado en la ciudad de Urbana.
Congratulations.
Felicidades. Gracias.
So we'd like to encourage everyone to consider every day supermarket employees day and take a moment to express appreciation to the folks who keep the shelves stocked and keep our, um, our kitchens functioning. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. Committee of the whole, Dennis Roberts.
That's great. So the committee of the whole met on Wednesday, February seventeenth, um, which is unusual, but it was-
Excuse me, Dennis. I just realized I skipped, um, council input and communications on our part of the agenda. I apologize.
So you did. You can wait.
Anyone on the council wish to make a comment? Sharice?
Um, yes, I would like to say something. Um, first of all, in response to Christopher Hansen saying that, um, I thought it was a good idea to have background checks. Uh, that was kind of taken out of context and because I was actually discussing certain positions where it isn't to the benefit of any employer to be able to do a background check. Having been a, a, a teacher, I had to have not just my fingerprints done. And, uh, but they did a background check on me before I could, would, was put in the classroom. So there are certain, certain jobs within public service in particularly. I think that, uh, that was the context in which I was discussing that particular item. Number two, I would like to say, um, on Saturday, uh, here in Ward adjacent in Champaign, there was a, um, a vaccination, uh, uh, event that happened at, um, Church of the Living God, at which time they had, um, a hundred and fifty doses approximately of, uh, vaccine for everybody. Well, not everybody, obviously, because they only had a hundred and fifty doses. Anyway, on some level, this was arranged and, uh, organized, I think, with Carl. And this is not to say anything negative regarding Church of the Living God. However, Carl, you gotta do better. Um, I am so disappointed in how there's been little, uh, work done and little organizing done regarding how, uh, people in my community will be vaccinated. There has been an issue regarding people who are homebound and unable to go to the hospital to get vaccinated, let alone make appointments. And, uh, after discussing this particular issue with somebody, uh, a friend of mine whose father is homebound and unable, uh, to go to the, the, the hospital or the doctor or to make an appointment to go elsewhere to be vaccinated. And she told me that her, uh, the Carl said, they're not going out. And they're not, they're not vaccinating people. And she had already had a discussion with Julie Pride about that particular thing. And Julie Pride was under the impression that they would be. So, um, Carl, you need to step up, OSF, you need to step up. You need to organize with black churches in the areas. And, uh, if nothing else, to try to help them to vaccinate their congregation at the very least. That is a good starting place.
Thank you, Sharice.
That's what I have to say.
Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, so we had two items on the consent agenda. As I said, this meeting was held on, on Wednesday, the seventeenth due to inclement weather. Uh, and the consent agenda is I, for items that are considered to be rather mundane and agreed upon by the entire city council. And so for quick adoption, we have two items, resolution number twenty twenty-one, zero-two, zero-zero-six-R, a resolution approving a city of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement with First Followers Welcome Home Program. And the second one is ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh, zero-two, dash zero-zero-four, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, two thousand five North Willow Road. And for the committee, uh, we approved these and I forward them with approval recommendation.
You move, you're moving?
I did.
Okay.
I made that motion.
Well, okay. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice.
And Mary Alice has a question.
You're on mute, Mary Alice.
Sorry, I had a question, if that's okay. I, I did, I did want to ask a question about the annexation one. I, I don't know if that means that we have to move it off the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, probably it does.
Okay, um, well, then I, I guess I would move to, uh, move the ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana off the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Do we need to vote on that, Phyllis, or can we just move it off?
No, you need to take a vote on.
Okay, well, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes, so item B will be moved off the consent agenda. That leaves item A to be voted on. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, this then takes us to the regular agenda. And I guess we might as well begin with the, the, the resolution that was moved to this platform. Uh, ordinance, it's an or, it's a resolution number, let's see where we are. It's an ordinance number twenty-one, twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty-one dash oh-two, dash zero-zero-four, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, two thousand five North Willow Road. And for the committee of the whole, I have moved approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice.
Uh, so my question is, I, I thought that Wayne had a really interesting point about all the properties in that, in that area. Is there any, um, is there any plan from community development to reach out to those additional property owners to ask them if they are willing to annex into the city?
Yes, as Kat reported last week, um, we did think that it would be helpful to have some sort of outreach that of course needs to be balanced with all of the other work that we're doing. So it was, as she indicated, uh, we typically offer annexation prior to anything that's, um, less than offering it. So in terms of the one that's surrounded, yes, we could go out, you know, tomorrow and say, we need to, we need to take this. But before we even went out to a neighborhood to offer annexation, we wanted to see, check the council's temperature on whether or not, um, this one would go through before we, you know, take that next step. So somewhat, this is a bellwether to figure out if we should take that next step.
So, I mean, there's multiple, it's kind of a zigzaggy line there between City of Urbana and then extra. I'm thinking that maybe that neighborhood at least should be an outreach to them in terms of, especially given the fire that recently happened, that they might be more amenable to annexing. Not just the one property, I guess, is what I'm saying. I think it would be good to look at the whole neighborhood.
And that, yes, that is something that we have been talking about. But again, I wanted, we wanted to kind of see where council was on things before we brought, you know, an extra 14 properties to annex. We wanted to see how you felt about this one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sharice?
Yeah, to kind of piggyback on Mary Alice. Right now, Lori, there is, if I can remember correctly with that map, the property that is asking for annexation into Urbana is already next door to kind of like a boundary line property that is already in Urbana, correct?
That's correct, and that is the only way one can annex is if you are contiguous to the boundary. Otherwise, we would need to enter into an agreement, and in the future, you might be able to annex. But yet, you need that continuity or to be surrounded in order to annex.
So are there other properties? I'm trying to remember, there were some properties that were next door to that particular property, like two more houses, I think, that went down that block.
And if that doesn't work, I'm gonna, I can try sharing my screen here. Is Dennis's low-tech way okay for you all?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis, for crying.
All right.
I'm trying to see if I can find it.
This doesn't fit great on a page, but we'll do what we can. Here we go. So are you seeing that map? So it's the hashed property, the hatched property that is for your consideration this evening. And the, so it's kind of in the donut. So the properties that are on the outside are in the city, and then this is sort of in the donut that's not in the city. So you look at things, if you're looking at the line that's on the south, then the properties that are immediately north of that would be contiguous and therefore eligible for immediate annexation.
So if we approach other people about the, about annexing as well, is it possible for us to, okay, now I see. Just found my little piece of paper here. Is it possible that next to that one house, the two, one, two, three properties also can be annexed? Or is that what, kind of what Mary Alice was talking about as far as getting more than one property annexed? I mean, I don't.
Well.
Do it all at the same time, or do we have to do them one at a time? Because you have to be bound, have a boundary.
I see what you're asking. So if there is a group of properties and they're being processed together, they're coming to you together, then yes, we could do it one at a time. We wouldn't have to, you know, come back to you every two weeks with a separate one. And another alternative is if there were some that did not, that were not contiguous, but had an interest in the future in annexing, then we could go through the process of doing an annexation agreement. That's a much more laborious process. So it is, it would be best if we could get them to immediately annex through petition as a group. That would be the most efficient way of doing it.
Okay. So, Dennis, can I make a motion regarding this?
Do you want to make an amendment?
Kind of, sort of. Well, when I, when I. Okay, I'm sorry. What I kind of like to do is table this particular annexation until the community development has an opportunity to approach the other properties.
I think that petitioner is really interested in coming into the city as soon as possible. We've already done the work for this one. So it's not going to save us any work to do it as a separate batch. It will just probably upset the petitioner that they're unable to get the services that they're hoping to get. Because it will take some time to do outreach. It's not as, you know, it's not as though we go out tomorrow and people are, you know, banging on our doors. So it will take some time. And I don't know if the petitioner is here this evening. They were under the impression that this was supported due to the vote last week. So I'm not sure that they're here to speak, but it's my understanding that they are really interested in coming into the city as soon as possible.
Okay, in that case, I withdraw my recommendation or motion or whatever.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, Lori, while you have that up there, it looks like just one, I only see one property there that isn't contiguous in that part. Is that right? Anybody else that wants to join the city in this?
Well, there is a couple. So can you see my cursor or should I do an annotation?
We can see your cursor.
Okay, so for instance, if this were to be approved tonight, then this one comes in tomorrow, then that still means, excuse me, this one then would not be contiguous. And then we would, of course, look at the entire neighborhood, which the sheet doesn't have the whole neighborhood. But we, you know, if we're going to do the effort of doing an outreach, we're going to do it to the larger neighborhoods. So there's, there might be one or two also in there that are not contiguous.
Seems like, at least in this part of it, it looks like anybody that wanted to here could apply for annexation. I don't think we've ever turned down anybody who wanted to be annexed. There's a few that, or one that I remember and one that came back to us after he was annexed that didn't want to be annexed that we've debated before. But as far as I remember, anytime anybody's come to us, it's never been an issue. I think, you know, in general, we're supportive of people that want to, we're already providing a lot of the services. You know, it's just a matter of if we aren't collecting the taxes.
Okay, any other comments? Dennis?
And just as some people are interested in receiving the services of the city, other people are still motivated by economy for them and not being interested in entering the tax body of the City of Urbana. So, you know, it's an individual, sometimes it's an individual plot by plot decision. The protection of the fire department might be a motivating factor to bring several communities in, several of these properties in. But yeah, without having a conversation about it, we're not going to know if other people would be interested in this as well. And there's one, there's one property across the street that's going to be contained now with, completely by the city. And so that property becomes a potential annexation property. But of course, we wouldn't want to do that without speaking with them and encouraging them to join us.
Okay, any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. That completes the Committee of the Whole report. Thank you, Dennis. Next on, we're regular agenda, Resolution 2021-02-007R, which is the Resolution Prioritizing Tactical De-escalation and the Use of Force Policy and Police Transparency in Urbana. Mary Alice?
Um, so I think this is just the regular agenda. Do we need a motion? I guess Dennis would need to do the motion.
This is still Dennis.
It's still my work.
Sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, because we've divided the agenda into two different sections, but.
Yep, and then we've taken things off. So everything, one, everything here is still from the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, so as you said, Mayor, we're talking about Resolution Number 2021-02-007R. It's a Resolution Prioritizing Tactical De-escalation and the Use of Force Policy and Police Transparency in Urbana. So it came to City Council with recommendation of approval.
And I'll second that.
Indeed, well said. All right, so having presented it, now, Mayor, you have an opportunity to conduct the conversation.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mary Alice?
Yeah, I'd just like to address a couple of things that was brought up during public comment today. The first one had to do with some of the particulars on the use of force, when de-escalation should be used, when it shouldn't be used. I believe Sarah talked a lot about the details in the Use of Force Policy 300. And I just kind of wanted to remind people that the purpose was not to fully go through the entire use of force policy here. The purpose is to say the intent of City Council and how we want that direction of the use of force policy to move forward. I know that there is a lot of details and conversations that are going on internally, but also with the NAACP and also with the ACLU. But now, we also have a new police reform bill that just got signed in today. So there's a lot of moving pieces. So I just kind of wanted to let the public know. My purpose was not to completely approve the use of force policy. So everything is not in here. This is more of the direction. The second piece that I wanted to address was with the number of people on the Use of Force Committee. I know that we haven't even thought about a process for that. So what I'd like to propose is that once a process has been thought of, that that process come to City Council for input and for confirmation in terms of how that civilian would be selected. I don't know if we need to put that in the resolution, that that would be brought forth to City Council, but I would also like to say that City Council would be, just like we do with other committees, we approve that appointment. I think it's appropriate for City Council to approve the appointment of the civilian person who's added to the Use of Force Committee. So I wanted to put that out there. And then the third one that was brought by the Ministry Alliance had to do with the reporting. And so now that we have this new police reform bill, I know that use of force has to be reported every month to the state. So I do think that there's a couple of things, and I don't have all of the different items that are covered in that police reform bill in terms of reporting. But I do think that it would be good to have at least once a quarter or half a year, the items that are already being submitted to the state to have a memo or something that updates City Council in terms of what we've submitted to the state. We've already compiled all that information, but it would be good to have that at least presented to City Council. So those are kind of my thoughts based on the comments that were brought up, both in email and in public input today.
Jared?
I would certainly support, obviously, I made the suggestion originally, even though I missed the last meeting about incorporating council into the appointment process, but I of course support doing that. I also, it's like, here's some discussion amongst council about two points that folks raised that I hadn't even considered. One, going from one to two civilians on the police review board. Of course, always more in favor of civilian involvement in those kinds of review processes. So I don't think that's a priority we'd want to do too. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do that. And the reporting, you know, we kind of were, at one point in time, we were getting quarterly reports, or at least we were pushing for quarterly reports on traffic stop data, and that's happened, that stopped for quite some time. I'm not really sure why, but, you know, I would like to see more reporting than less. I think that the ministerial alliance suggestion of a bi-annual reports isn't out of line. I think it would be good to, you know, get a more comprehensive report every six months. And Mary Alice, I pulled up the IML report on the bill. I don't know if you saw that, Brad Cold sent it out earlier today. But in monthly reporting, that's on page four of the IML's report. It says, "Getting July 1, 2021, a report on any incident where a law enforcement officer was dispatched to deal with a person experiencing a mental health crisis or incident, including the number of incidents, etc., etc.," that's going to be reported also on July 1, 2021, a report on use of force, including any action that resulted in death or serious bodily injury of a person or the discharge of a firearm and/or in the direction of a person. That was also the other part in it. And then there's another part about cameras. But those were the two things specifically mentioned by the IML as being reported. So obviously, we're going to be collecting some data on both of those points. And I believe we already published similar data on the city website. So I don't imagine that we wouldn't at least include that in our public disclosures. I'm sure the ISP will make that data available, even if we weren't going to. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't. So it should be there, but, you know, as far as a formal report, I don't think bi-annual would be out of question. I think quarterly would be even better, but I don't know that everybody would support that. So those are my, those are my initial thoughts to people and bi-annual reporting.
Council comments? Dennis?
Yeah, okay, so I'd be willing to discuss about two people. Maybe it would be interesting to know what kind of backgrounds the individuals would preferably have to serve in this capacity, or whether they'd have to be trained if they were not very well-versed in some of the details of police activity or procedure, I suppose. That's a possibility. And then the reporting, I would do bi-annual. I think that if we're getting reports from multiple sources every three months, the staff's just going to be swirling with reporting, and I'm not sure that it's going to be necessarily as productive as it would be. I mean, I don't know, it sounds like it's going to be hard to keep up. I mean, considering that the Civilian Police Review Board wasn't able to pull together a report for several years, I just started wondering what quarterly reporting would do for everybody. So basically, I support what Jared just said.
Mary Alice?
So I guess my trepidation in terms of including more civilians on the use of force is we're not entirely sure how easy or difficult it is going to be to get people trained up, to have enough knowledge to serve on that board. I would be willing to augment the language to say at least one. So as we learn through this process, we can figure out, is it realistic for us to be able to find people who are willing to participate? I know that in Champaign, I believe, the mayor has said that they rotate people. So even if we're rotating people, then now we're doubling that. So I guess that would be my hesitation with increasing the number of civilians. I'm not opposed to it. I'm just not sure how easy or difficult it's going to be for us to be able to even get this whole process set up for one person. So if we're going to change that, then I would say, we should say at least one rather than only one. And then the second piece has to do with the annual report. I know that in the resolution, I had put, you know, certain things that I would like to see in the annual report. But my hope is that the annual report will be quite robust and not just cover the use of force, but would also talk about other items that are going on the police force. So I guess in terms of a bi-annual thing, I guess we could have a mini-report, so to speak. So I'm hoping that we would have something that would be much more comprehensive at the end of every year. And in fact, I think we did this with the traffic reports, where we had, we had something that looked at a whole year and went into further analysis. But the quarterly reports that we talked about were small. It wasn't a small amount of work, but they were smaller. So if the council's leaning towards the idea of having two reports, and I would strongly suggest that we minimize the amount of time and focus on exactly what we want to see in that kind of smaller report or mid-year report, I guess I would call it.
No.
I agree with Mary Alice on her comments about the number of people on the committee. I believe, you know, putting a civilian on the committee, you know, from the residents of Urbana, from their perspective.
the residents of Urbana from their perspective, that's better than, um, than what is there now. You know, it's, it's, uh, 100% populated by people of the, of the police department. And we as council are, um, advocating, you know, to have a citizen, you know, on the, um, on the committee. I think it's important for us to walk, or I'm sorry, important for us to crawl. Before we walk, uh, let's get one person on there. Um, and let's see what it takes to get that person trained up to a level, um, that they can have substantive, uh, input into, you know, use of force incidents, you know, in the city. And then if, um, if, if we learn that there's value, you know, to having one, then we can revisit, um, on an additional and down the road. Uh, I, I don't think that we should throw two in there right off the bat, because like Mary Alice said, that we may, may find it difficult to find two people that are willing, um, able and, and to get trained up to be able to, um, to give, uh, that sort of input. So I would, um, advocate for just leaving it to one.
Jared?
And I'm not opposed to, uh, she, keeping the language at, uh, at a minimum, or as Mary, Mary Alice said, at the, at the least one person, and we can go take it from there. Totally fine with me. And I, and I agree. I, I don't, uh, guess I, I should have, uh, made that more clear, Mary Alice. I, I, I wouldn't see, you know, the two reports being equal in depth and measured, uh, when I was thinking of that. But, uh, just like quarterly reporting, you know, we get more granular perspective as we go along and then we get a bigger picture. Just because this is such a meaningful part of the way that the police, uh, inter, interact with the pub, public. I felt like, you know, if we don't hear anything about it except for one year and there's, you know, not really anything going else in between those times, it's probably too long. Uh, of course, if there was an incident, it would obviously be, you know, come to light and from the council, but at least we're being more proactive with at least two reports than, uh, just a single one in a year. So that was kind of, kind of my thoughts on that.
Bill?
Um, yeah, I think I agree with the, uh, at least one and, uh, see how one works out. And it is, there is going to be a lot of training, uh, for anybody to serve on that board. I think, uh, people realize that, uh, it sounded like for a couple of the people that were in public input might have gotten, been getting the CPRB a little bit confused, um, with the use of force review board. We still have the CPRB that, um, will be investigating and, um, making rulings on complaints, but the use of force review board reviews, what, 100 use of forces approximately per year? So it's going to be a lot of meeting. I think that'd be a, a lot to find two people and get them trained and, and rotate people and everything. But, um, it's potential, but I think getting one is our, is our main goal right now. For the reporting, I think maybe, I mean, if we're going to be making monthly, if the police department's going to be making monthly reports to the state on several issues, including, most if not all use of force, I don't know, it may not be exactly all of them. That wasn't clear to me, but at least a lot of the use of force will be part of that monthly reporting. Seems like maybe we could have a quarterly compilation of those monthly reports, something like that. So it wouldn't be a lot of extra work for the police department, but it would be a quarterly report. I think sometimes when we get monthly reports, like our monthly spending reports and things like that, come at various times during the week and we may not always get to read them as much as we would want. But I think having a quarterly report stands out a little bit more and we might pay more attention to it. So I think if you, if we ask that those be compiled, those monthly reports be compiled quarterly and provided to council, that might be the way to go with that. But I do think the annual report needs to be a comprehensive report, looking at all aspects of the police department training and everything, and, and really be a good, um, picture of what's going on in the police department and be able to compare it year to year.
Any other comments?
Hey, I don't see anybody else raising their hand. Uh, so I guess we're, I'm finally reading Mary Alice. Uh, I guess we don't need to change anything about section two, because it already does say include at least one. I don't think I realized that it said that until we were having this discussion, but, uh, it's already in there. So I don't think we need to do anything about that. Um, I'll go ahead and make a, a, a motion to amend section three to, uh, go along with what Bill Brown just suggested, and let's have a vote on how people feel about it. So that would be, uh, section three shall submit, uh, quarterly reports and an annual report. So the additions of the word, uh, after submit quarterly reports and an annual report, which will include, uh, the use of force by its officers. And I guess maybe, uh, then we should say in the second sentence, at a minimum, the annual report shall include, blah, 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 everything that you listed afterwards.
Yeah, I was just going to ask how we differentiate that, because I think that there's way more granularity in terms of. So if the intent is to, um, is to have a quarterly report that aggregates the information that we're sending to the state, maybe we should just add that on at the very end instead of, right? So right before this report will be publicly available, we could say, in addition, a quarterly report will be provided to city council with aggregated results of data that's sent to the state.
Yeah, yeah, true. That'd be probably less complicated.
And you're removing the reference to quarterly report in the first sentence then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just adding one sentence.
Yeah, Mary Alice's ideas is more succinct.
So you're not changing the first sentence and you're adding that last sentence?
Correct.
It's the sentence right before this report will be publicly available.
Gotcha. And then you're adding, um, on the second sentence, at a minimum, the annual report shall include.
Yeah, just to differentiate there, I think that would be good.
Okay. Was there a motion? Someone move? Jared?
Uh, that was, that was my motion as we talked it out, but, uh.
Oh, I'll second that motion since I helped you.
Motion by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Well, that motion passes for that amendment. So now we're ready to vote on the main resolution? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yeah.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Congratulations.
Then one more, uh, item on the agenda. Uh, ordinance number 2120 dash 01 dash 003, an ordinance amending city code chapter 12 concerning exceptions to the human rights ordinance. And this came to the, uh, this comes to the city council with no recommendation at this time.
If I could, um, just pick up the thread that I, uh, where we left off last time, is that all right?
Maybe, oh yeah, I guess. We didn't get a second on this one yet, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second. Now we can discuss it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill Brown. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay. So, uh, following the discussion on Wednesday night, um, I, um, I sent you an alternative version of section 12 dash 105E, um, which read the provisions of division three and sections 12 dash 101 through 12 dash 103 of division four of this article shall not apply to the city of Urbana. Now, um, tonight Pete suggested that we probably don't even need any reference to division four, and I think that's probably right. Um, so, um, if you were so inclined, section 12 dash 105E could just read the provisions of division three of this article shall not apply to the city of Urbana. Um, Pete also suggested that for, just to remove any lack of clarity, that, um, the city of Urbana be added to the definition of person, and I think that would be fine also. And then, um, after hearing some of the comments from the public about confidentiality, and, um, it wasn't my intent that, that, that we wouldn't respect the confidentiality, uh, provisions. So what I would suggest to manage, uh, through that is in section 12 dash one, which is the, um, section, um, that expresses the city's commitment to conform to the requirements of division two, that a sentence could be added there that said that, uh, the city shall respect the confidentiality provisions of section 12 dash 83E. So that it's clear that we're not trying to exempt ourselves from the confidentiality provisions.
What was that number again?
That was, um, 12 dash 83E.
Discussion. Bill?
Yeah, I agree with those. I would also, um, suggest we delete the fifth whereas. Not, whereas's don't really mean much when it comes to implementation of ordinance. But that one says, whereas the city council desires to clarify that the city, its employees and agents are not subject to human rights ordinance. I think that was, uh, left over from one of the earlier interpretations. Um, so I'd say delete that one. And then I think, um, didn't Pete say something about 1263? Did you look at that? I didn't get a chance to look at that.
Yeah, it was public access.
About that, um, but I, I didn't, I'm going to confess, I didn't understand it. That's about public accommodation. So I don't know if Pete's still here, but, um, if he could, if you wanted to ask him a question, he could maybe explain what, what he would recommend there.
I've been promoted. So the public accommodations bit, um, and, and this is simply because it came up in an earlier appeal hearing. There was some question about whether the city's provision of any services, um, fall on, other than employment, fall under, um, the, the ordinance. So if, uh, you know, random, uh, city employee said, uh, I, I don't feel like giving you this permit because you're black, because you're whatever, um, that, that would be discrimination, but that's not due to the city's position as an employer, that's due to the city's position as providing a service. And so clarification that public accommodations include the city would be useful. Right now, the public accommodations clause does not include the definition of person, which is where the city would be added. It says individual. And so what I was suggesting was that you change individual in that, in the definition of public accommodation to person. And then, and you'll pardon me, I have to, um, switch applications here for a moment so I can find it. Um, in section 12 dash 63, um, 1A, it refers to place of public accommodation. And in the commission's recommendations, uh, we suggested removing the words place of in all three places that it appears, because it's a public accommodation, um, that, um, might deny you some service. It's not particularly a place. Place is one of the choices. There can be a place of public accommodation, but it could also be a business or, um, a, a, in this case, government, uh, uh, entity like the city of Urbana. So the suggestion was simply to remove place of three places in 1263 1A. And with regard to the confidentiality clause, I, I think what you're doing is probably okay. And I, you know, with always the concern of making changes on the fly on the floor, um, the section that currently refers to confidentiality says that everything except that which appears in public hearings and, uh, um, conciliation agreements should be confidential. Because the process for the city is quite different, um, because the commission is going to somehow, um, facilitate trying to address the problem with the city, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't carry the same kinds of procedures that that confidentiality clause, uh, anticipates. And so you might want to circle back and add, uh, confidentiality clauses that are specific to the city. Part of the reasoning behind the confidentiality clause is you do want the stuff in public hearings to be public. So once it gets to a public hearing, you don't want the, the public not to be able to know what kind of discrimination took place. Um, and in the clause that you have written, the city is going to talk to the commission and then the commission's going to announce it publicly. So you, you might want to seek advice on writing a sentence that doesn't necessarily refer to the section in 1283. That's my only comments.
Well, at this point, um, there've been enough, uh, tweaks, some of which are more than just minor. I think this should be sent back to legal for review at the very least, and then brought back to, would we bring it back to council or the committee again? Process wise?
You can bring it back to committee if you want to, to discuss anything else, should you want to add anything or take anything away after you have it in another draft form?
Okay.
Or if you think that it'll be okay the way you're getting ready to do it, then it can go right back to council.
I suspect it'll, we should send it to committee, which would be next week.
That would be safe.
For review. How's that? So, if there's, if there's no objection to that, I'll entertain a motion to send this back to committee for these final tweaks.
The second?
Okay.
I'll, are you going to make the motion, Charice? I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Well, I make the motion that we send, um, uh, the resolution or, uh, ordinance amending Urbana city code, chapter 12, uh, back to, uh, to committee after making certain amendments throughout the, through the chapter.
And Mary Alice seconded. Okay.
Do we need to withdraw our motion, Dennis's?
Did Dennis have a motion?
Yes. Uh, well, we never voted yes on it, so it's kind of a moot point. I think it's a dead motion. I don't know if we have to withdraw it. I guess that would be a Phyllis question, perhaps. I guess I could say I withdraw it.
Yeah, you can pull it.
I'll pull it. I'll say I withdraw it.
Okay. Withdrawn by Dennis. All right.
Mayor?
Yeah. Oh, Jared?
Can we add to our list of things that, uh, we're clarifying when this comes back? About the original issue and the original complaint that started this whole ball down the, uh, down the mountain with the criminal background checks and whether or not, uh, they're not, they should not be included in part of a jobless thing, or they should be based on what's going on with the, with the HR. I would really like to get clarification on that, too.
So to, to that point, and Pete might have something to say about this, and, and we had talked about this last, um, last Wednesday, Jared, when you weren't there. So, um, Pete was cautioning us against talking too specifically about a case that is actually still pending. And, um, so Pete, do you want to, um, be more, uh, speak for yourself?
Yeah. The, the caution was actually about the confidentiality clause. Um, any complaints that are currently pending, none of us, and us means who have seen the complaints, can comment on those. Now, there was, um, a, a complaint that was, um, initially found to have no jurisdiction, no probable cause, that was brought to appeal, uh, on November 10th, and that was about, um, the, um, the prior conviction record, uh, issue. And, um, I think you can, uh, you, you are welcome to talk about that, because that took place in a public hearing and therefore is accepted by the, uh, confidentiality clause.
And that, and that's fine. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to get a ruling out of, out of that or discuss the case specifically. I think we can still, in principle, discuss what led us to where we are now, while in that process and decide, you know, it doesn't have to be that issue. It can be. it doesn't have to be that issue, it can be any, substitute that for whatever, whatever you wanna.
Right. And just to be clear, I didn't mean to imply that you couldn't talk about the clause in the, the ordinance itself, because of course, that's, you know, that's still there and still requires no advertising of things that might imply discrimination, so.
Right, right, and that's all, that's all my concern is, I'm not concerned about particular complaint, but we should figure out where we, where it stands on that anyway, okay, that's all.
So when that, when that gets put on the agenda, I just want to be clear, it's a, it's a distinctly different topic. So there'll, there'll be two different topics on the agenda, and I guess that'll be a discussion item. Okay.
Fine by me, I mean, I think we need to talk it through.
Okay, great.
Okay, we have a motion by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice, to send this back to committee. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda are reports of special committees, are there any reports? Okay, reports of officers?
Nothing from me.
We have no new business, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.